Well, we'll see.
You'll lie, will I?
Send it. We're going to call a meeting to order workshop at 7:02 on September 16th. Roll call, Anne?
Here.
Tammy?
Here.
Co?
Here.
Cory?
Here.
Kalisham?
Here.
Before we do the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to ask everyone to bow their heads for a moment of silence to remember an American Charlie Kirk, whose life was taken way too early by assassination on September 10th, 2025. Let's begin. Could please have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anonymous? Gender items. Policy on requesting and providing funding for community groups not for profits.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think that Tammy had brought up a good point. One of the last times that we had spoken on this, and that is there were a lot of organizations that we see basically time and time again. And I do agree with, I believe, you can tell me if I misspeak for you, but I believe her thought was, why are we making all of the organizations who come to us time and time again to fill out an application?
The Winterport ones that we know.
Right, that we know of and that we know are Winterport. This, I think, is a good template for those that maybe knew coming to us saying, you know, that they would like some funding.
So what are you saying, maybe for out of town?
For anybody new.
Anybody new.
That we don't know.
Right.
I mean, but the ones that have been here for years and years and years.
Don't have to do whatever.
Cemetery, the ambulance, the... I mean, we know, we know all them, the senior citizens group because they're so little.
Right.
Women's club, I mean, I don't think they should have to jump through hoops. You know, because they have budget process and it's all discussed and, 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 but I do think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, please.
I do think, on the other hand, that at the budget, I think that the people who are requesting money should all come before the budget committee and state their case.
Right.
I think that's fair. You know, and that means all of them. And if they don't come, then, then you have to rethink.
If you're going to give them.
If you're going to give them money.
And maybe we limit it to the board, ones only. These other ones, we don't know if the money's actually going towards people of Winterport or it's kind of...
Well, the, like the Waldo cap and everything, I mean, they, they should come out and state their case. They ask for money year after year.
Right.
I mean, and they, they should have to come and state their case. Any of those organizations like that, the, the ones that are asking for... Yeah, Waldo cap is on, I can think of it off the top of my head.
Because we do vote on it anyway, I mean, it's voted on budget, it's voted, approved by council.
But I think they should all have to go before the board either way. And, and that negates having to do that.
Right.
Unless they're brand new.
Is there anybody else with any comments on funding for nonprofits? So we'd like to do, have that added in to an ordinance or a?
A policy.
A policy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To have that, okay.
Yep.
So we'll have Casey do up the policy to, to add that into before the money is... Before it's applied if they're...
I was going to say, wait, I can, yeah, we can, we can do up the policy.
But, well, he's, well, oh, I see what you mean.
Do we have one in place right now that this could be added to? Is what I was... No.
We don't do it. I don't think that, I'm saying that right off the top of my head, I don't, I don't think so. I don't re...
Because, because this is new.
Yeah.
Then, no, there is no such written policy to go along with it. But that is something that we can do and vote on at the next regular meeting.
Okay.
Do you want to do a policy or you want me to take it or what are you going to do? Okay.
Sure.
So you guys want to work on that for the next meeting?
Yeah.
And move over it?
Yep.
Yep.
Is there any other discussion? Moving on to water preservation ordinance.
I did not get that done.
You didn't, that's okay.
I did not, I, it, it's, it's pretty involved, so I did not get it.
You want to make till next workshop and discuss it?
Yeah, table until next workshop.
Table until next, yes.
I called Town of Lincoln.
Yeah.
Like I said, we would talk to them, and they were very helpful and they just, where they have the compensation for Poland Springs, they monitor every morning. They, they write down how much has been pumped out, they got some special kind of meter in the aquifers.
Yeah.
So, I mean...
We haven't got that yet, so we won't have to worry about that part of it.
Right, but, you know, it's...
Yeah.
There'd, there'd be a good one.
That's what, yes, definitely.
It's in their land use package, of course, I haven't got it, I've had intentions on it, but the land use ordinance, so we can get it that right out of there, what they go through.
Yeah. That was at Lincoln, you said?
Yeah, okay. Okay. Fernal Field bid packet. It's coming up to the time when we've got to decide on getting this out to bid and coming up with what we want into, into the bid packet. And that's what we need to discuss right now, what people would like to see and want in it and don't want in it.
I don't have it in front of me.
Yes.
I can't do it.
Yeah, Chris Hall, you speak.
Okay, I was just going to say, well, good evening. My name is Crystal Lancaster, I'm the currently holder of Fernal Field Dragway, AKA Fernal Field. In an effort to not step on toes, but simply just to help, because I know everyone's time is valuable. A couple of weeks ago, you should have received an email with a draft bid packet. That was simply a template to help you all get started. I did that out of a courtesy on my own time, thinking that might just be helpful. I probably do sound like a broken record at this point, where time, to your point, is of the essence and we really, it would be very helpful if we could get the bid moving along, and of course, we can't do that without a bid packet. So certainly don't want to put anybody on the spot, I'm just trying to be as helpful as possible in moving this along because unfortunately, it has been a couple of months, the current racing season is coming to an end at the end of October, and we've already started planning the 2026 season because that's just what you do in this industry. So the sooner we can get the bid packet finalized and start getting bids in, the better off I think we will all be. Of course, it benefits the town most of all, so really just hoping to see if there's anything I can do to help or really just to understand what, I guess, the whole, not so much the holdup of what the process looks like here. That's really my question at this point. What, what can we do to help bring this to the finish line so we can move forward?
That's what we're going to do tonight.
Perfect.
Put it together and get a bid packet going out as soon as possible and get the bids in and...
Beautiful.
Order it, so.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
I think like we talked about before in, in the lease, we need to do and set the minimum bid price of $40,000 per year. It's going to be a three, do a three-year bid with an extension.
Oh, wait, quit, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot I was taking notes, Tammy.
Sure.
Please back up again, what's that now?
All right, so starting now, as we discussed before at our meeting, we're going to do a minimum bid of $40,000 per year for a three-year contract. It doesn't necessarily mean you're going to bid 40,000, you're basically, it's far over the three years. So if you bid, for example, 120,000, but you bid at 50, 50, 20, whatever, you know what I mean? It's, it's whoever's the lowest bid for the three-year period. Because you understand the first year could, it's going to cost you more money getting going. So we're looking at it over three, as a three-year contract.
You mean highest?
The highest bid. The other thing I see reading the lease agreement over is I'd like to see number four deleted out of the lease agreement. I feel we have no need to see the receipts that the leasing is bringing in, that's their business, not ours. We're leasing them the piece of land and the amount of money they make is their business, it's none of ours to see the receipts.
That was, that was left in there before when we used to get percentage?
Yeah.
And it just never?
Never come off, but it should, if we're going to have a lease right, that needs, that needs to come off. That's their business, none of our business.
Yeah, we're not getting a percentage anymore.
I also would like to see number six deleted out of the lease agreement to allow the leasing, the leasing to use the property for what they want. As long as they're using it for anything as a legal purpose, it's none of our business if they're doing drag racing, if they're doing car shows, if they're doing snowmobile racing, if they're doing motocross racing. That's up to them what they want to do. They're paying a very good dollar to lease it, and I want them to have the opportunity that says, hey, we're, we've got a concert show over here tonight with a car show. That let them do it, they're paying the money to do it. So I'd like to see that deleted out.
Excuse me, I'm just going to, can I call that like 6A? Because we also have 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, so...
See, I, I believe I had it under 6.3. No, I had that under...
6.1.
Well, 6.1 is permits.
No.
6.2.
Mr. Chair, I have a point of order.
We're in a workshop right here, so let us please work on this, thank you.
I have a point of order because you're...
I'm at a workshop, please let us work on this, thank you. So we are at 6.3.
Allow car shows. That's not recreation.
Mary Ann, would you please sit down, we're in a workshop, please sit down.
No.
Yes.
But you are out of...
Mary Ann, sit down, well, this is our workshop, this is not for you. I'm going to ask you to sit down one more time or I'm going to ask you to leave. It's up to you. So... So number six.
I hope another counselor will speak to that.
Okay, so that should be number six.
What your authority is.
Shh, we're working, please.
I know.
Go ahead, it's six.
That should be number six, is allow leasing to use property for what they want, purpose. Yeah, and that's what it states.
Or do you want to leave that in and just take out? Tenant shall use the premises for the purpose of conducting automobile and motorcycle functions of the type known as drag race.
Yes, because then it says tenant shall not use the premises for any purpose.
And then, and then just, and then just take that out.
Out that sentence.
Yeah, maybe delete that sentence out, but I don't want them to be limited to what they're going to do, that they can only do drag racing, that, you know, they can have other events.
The person who bids on this might not be a drag racer period.
Exactly, so maybe they're into just snowmobiles, maybe they're just a car show enthusiast that wants to have car shows. So you've got to have it that, if they're going to do it, they can, we're not going to have control over them because they're paying us a decent price.
Thank you, that's all we wanted to say, thank you.
As how about, how about, as well as other racing? I mean, I don't, I don't know how to, what else to put under.
Like car shows, something, that, that's, I mean, they could have an event here, they could say, we want to have a, a big event.
I just don't want to delete the whole thing.
Right, no, I don't want, well, and that's, well, we might have to delete it and add different wording into it to allow...
Delete the...
Because what, what this is saying is that we're using the premises for the purpose of conducting automobile and motorcycle functions known as drag races.
Take out known as drag races.
But it might be more than automobile and motorcycle functions, like now they could get kind of weird snowmobiles or we had, we had a fair setup, we had a little common ground, you know, with...
I think it still would be nice though to know what they're going to use it for.
What I'm saying, as long as it's anything that is legal in this town, that what makes a difference, as long as it's not that, you know, we're not going to allow not that.
But that's, but that's why I'm saying it would be nice for us to know what they're doing so we can make sure that it's nothing, not that they're going to do anything illegal, but, you know, whoever might be bidding on it.
Right, which we could ask, I mean...
Yeah. How about, how about if we just say?
That if anything other than anything that would, you know, certain things, you know, automobile racing, motorcycle races, that you come to the town and ask approval or?
Yes.
Yeah. Something like, like if you're going to have a concert up there, hey, we have a concert scheduled for October 1st, is, is it okay with the town?
Right, yeah. So we can, how about if we just leave six and say, tenant shall use the premises for the purpose of conducting automobile and motorcycle functions of the type known as drag racing or takeout drag racing, possibly. All other functions must have...
Town approval?
Town approval.
Yeah, we could add that.
Yeah, I don't think we want to take the drag racing out though, because if you take it out, it'll get it bad.
Exactly, no, we want that in there, but we won't allow them to, to do other things.
Oh, absolutely, open the reins up, absolutely. Make sure it's stated that it could be year-round too.
Right.
Okay.
And then next, I'd like to see something done with 6.3, the function hours.
Can we do something with six?
We should.
Six to camping?
Six to, sure, what would you like to do?
How is the... Because that's not a campground per se.
Right.
And I just want to make sure it doesn't get used as one as it had been in the past.
Well, they had to get special permit in, right, to do it?
I was just about to say, if I could maybe help you with this point, might be helpful.
Sure.
Okay. To Tammy's point, we are bound between what's called an event campground permit, and in event camping with the state of Maine, there's a special set of regulations versus, say, a commercial campground like what you'd see at O'Hana, for example. And we have, we have to abide by the event camping guidelines. So in this portion, it might be helpful for you to state as such, state that if camping is allowed, you have to adhere to event camping guidelines set by the state of Maine. That might just be helpful.
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Do you know what that's? Any, any number of sites, any citations about?
There are, like the number of camping sites per se, there's a limitation that you're bound to based on your event campground permit. You have to apply, you get a set number of camping spots, and then you still have to follow the rules.
There's various levels, and it depends on the type of camper as well, and like a motorhome that can be driven out doesn't apply, like, just like a mobile hide camper would, there's just different rules and regulations.
Did you guys apply for that this year when you?
Yes.
Yeah, how many sites were, did they give you?
I have to look, it was in the high twenties, it was barely under thirty.
Really? Would they give you more or is that?
They absolutely would.
You, you could get more.
Yes, so for example, if we are to win the bid next year, we will have to increase that number.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like to see is 6.3, the hours of use. Right now, it states that shall be limited to Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, the event shall begin at 9:00 AM and no later than 9:00 PM. They're only giving them three days of use. And I feel where we, we're doing a year lease on this at the amount we're giving them, it really shouldn't matter if they used it on a, on a Monday, if they used it on a Saturday or a Wednesday. It's, it's theirs, they, they leased it from us and let them, they want to have a, a car show on a Wednesday night. That's up to them, let them do it. I don't want them to be restricted.
The only thing I will say to that, I agree with you, but the drag, the dragging on, you're not talking about drag racing.
No, no, I'm saying for, yeah, because of the noise ordinance and everything else, of course they're not. But if, if they're, it's a Wednesday night from 5:00 to 8:00, we're having a car show and a barbecue.
Yep.
It's, they've leased it, let them have that, let them have different events to make money and pay back the money they're going to pay for the lease.
Okay, yeah.
Loud noise ones is just Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Right.
Yeah, so, so let's not delete it.
Don't delete it.
We're partying hard on Tuesday night.
No, I just, I just, yeah, I just want to make sure it's like directly go.
No, definitely, yeah.
I, I just think it should be, the premises shouldn't be limited, it should be available seven days a week.
I agree.
With, with use.
To Steve's point, being able to have like a beneficial cruise in on, say, like a Tuesday night would be a game.
Right, yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah. So keep it quiet and go to bed earlier.
Yes, music stops, so don't worry. And plus, the facility doesn't have weights, so once it's after dark, kind of game over, I mean.
Got to get some light towers.
One can dream, one can dream.
That bid is going to limit.
That's it.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do you want to order them? So what you want to do is take out from where it says tenant may make additional function requests?
Yeah, we'll take that out. Really, they don't need to make additional requests because we're leasing that to them, you know, seven days a week.
But do you?
And basically, they just got to abide by the state of Maine's noise ordinance policy that the state of Maine has.
And we have an ordinance.
And we have one also, so, or by our, add it into the Town of Winterport's noise ordinance policy for the hours that, that we have.
Must be adhered to, what's the term? Noise must be...
Adhered to.
Okay, so if we take that out and then we just put noise ordinance policy must be adhered to.
Adhere to the Town of Winterport's noise ordinance policy. And the other thing I would like to see added, I don't believe it's in there, that I'd like to see added into the lease, that at least minimum of once a year, that the leasing will mow or just bush hog the property, the, the grass beside the drag strip and just, if they want to do it more often, great, but if they would at least once a year, that way we're not, we're leasing it out, we're not sending public works out to do it.
They shouldn't have to.
And all we're asking is once a year, if they want to do it weekly, if they want to keep an area all mowed up, great, but at least once a year, please, please mow it.
I agree with that.
Right, and we'll get it done in the first initial time.
Yeah, we'll do it the initial time, so basically, once they go there, they're not like, we've got to deal with all this grass, we'll, we'll have it bush hogged, and then we ask once a year. Go ahead.
That's super kind, and I'm, I'm just saying that from a matter of fact standpoint because we've bush hogged three times now, we actually work with a racer who bush hogs for us, which is super helpful. And I mean, even the three times doesn't seem like enough, so...
Right, that's why I feel we're being real easy, just say once a year, if you only did once.
That's super helpful, just even get us kickstarted, that's above and beyond, so thank you for that.
And we marked all the holes for the town with...
Yes, we did.
There's some pretty big sink holes.
Oh, I thought there is.
Yeah, I know those tractor.
Don't lose a tractor in there, don't do it.
Is there anything else anybody else would like to see on the lease or taken out or?
Let's talk about 6.4, overnight camping.
Okay.
I know that they have to deal with the state as far as their licensing and how they do camping and there's a couple of things that they will have to do in order to have a camping license or whatever Crystal called it, but I think that we should... I, I don't know why it says tenant, I'm about halfway down. Tenant may make additional overnight camping requests by receiving authorization. I would say if they're able to do it through the state, why are they asking us?
Right, and also what this says in here is the camping is for Friday and Saturday nights. Now, if we're letting them use this seven days a week for what they want, and they're having events during the week, how can we restrict them?
Because that's going to come from the state.
There, there is one thing.
If the state allows it, right? If the state allows it.
And, and the other thing though is we have to put in there that they make sure that there is, if, if you're going to allow that, that there has to be dumping.
Yes.
They have to be responsible for their own dumping and...
That comes from the state, yeah, that comes from the state.
They are, no matter what, they're there one day or all, every day.
Well, the, the thing that, and this isn't against anybody, this is just, just a matter of good sense, is to make sure that they take care of their waste and it doesn't, you know, that, that is something that we have to address. Because with overnight camping, there's no, no, nothing out there that we have. So we have to make sure that that's in there, that they have to make sure they take care of their dump, their waste.
Is that in with the state of Maine on what you do on the waste end of it?
Yes, absolutely, so I physically have to sign the license and agree to all the terms that the state sets forth. In all of those requirements that the state sets forth, there is a clause that says no camper should be dumping at said campground. So even though we'd be considered an event campground, we adhere to that. So that's why in the Fernal Field Dragway handbook, there's an actual clause that says hazardous waste. Every racer abides by taking care of their own gray water, any tank, any waste tank. It's their responsibility to have it taken care of, and that's where our partnership with Morseceptic comes in. They come to the dragway and they pump for everybody, so no one even needs, they wouldn't even think about dumping because we have the services available. So nobody can stay on-prem if they don't have a place to store their waste. And then the campers that don't have said waste tanks, the camper uses the port bodies that are onsite. So we've never, we've never run into an issue with that, we're overly accommodating because we don't ever want to have an issue with dumping, so.
The state's requirements report of all these do, correct?
Yes.
They need to give us a permit, a little inspection report of all these and all that, so.
Excellent point by Russ, there has to be a certain amount of bodies accessible for a certain amount of campers per square footage. So we currently set up at the dragway now exceed that minimum requirement because we want everybody to be as comfortable as possible. So for example, Pine Tree Jamboree, we had the biggest turnout we've ever seen this past weekend. And we actually had Morseceptic come in Friday night and Saturday night, which was overkill measures, but it meant a lot to me to know that everybody's tanks and every body was taken care of every night of the event. That's how strongly I feel about it.
It's a cleanliness thing more than anything, it's about keeping them, you know, a little bit of a dump, you know, we're trying to run a clean operation.
Correct, so yeah, no, dumping is, we feel as strongly as you and between your lease verbiage and the requirements set forth by the state, they're actually repetitive in a sense, which is good. Yeah, no...
So this does take care of that?
Yes.
You have heard all good things about you guys, no bad things, so.
We haven't even been getting...
Thank you.
They haven't even made complaints about the noise.
No, we're not, Ross.
Quiet, Ross.
We usually hear a bunch of complaints by, about noise by now, and we have not, I, well, I have not heard any complaints.
I really appreciate that.
It's a beautiful noise, Tammy.
No, I appreciate that because we are very, very mindful of our sound and we make sure that if we can end early, we do accommodate, because we don't want to be, we don't want to be those neighbors, right? So thank you, Tammy and Cory, that's me.
That's all right. Should we add anything if they decided to winter advantage that, like the snowplow and what have you is on them? That'd be on them, they, but if they decide they want to go in the winter and they're going to plow it to get in, I mean, they leased the property, it's...
One would think, but...
The, the maintenance, the maintenance should...
Right, and, you know, like, you know, taking care of, you know, the mowing, bush hogging, and, you know, the leasing will be responsible for all of the property to, the trash, the cleanup, you know. Snowplower, if they want to go in the winter, you know, they're going to have an event, and there's ice and they salt it to get for the public, that, that cost is on them, that's...
Where there is a snowmobile, a snowmobile trail that runs through there, we need something in there saying that whoever it is will work with them to...
On, on the side of...
To get around, however they got to do it, they're...
Right, because...
Work together.
Yeah. We have no reason to argue about it.
They've been wonderful, even the ATV, folks, they've been fabulous.
Yeah, we'll just have to add something in that the ITS snowmobile trail will be right on the woods line for somebody to beat up through.
Yeah, it's, it's nicely parked already.
It is, yeah, so just as long as that's in there, so somebody, they can't say nothing of the snowmobile went through.
Yeah, absolutely.
And just pass it on to the snowmobile drags, make sure you don't have any interference, you know.
Right.
That is such a fun idea, I love it. I digress.
And we'll, we'd get copies of the, the. Camping, the camping licenses and all that stuff.
Oh, of course.
And the insurance, that's all.
Yeah, I think that would all be turned in as a standard requirement.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything that I'd like to add, take out, or talk about about the lease?
Mr. Chair, may I hear now, now that we've gone through this, can I hear what Marian had to say?
Sure.
Thank you, Anne. I'm sorry, I apologize for raising my voice. The town gave the town council, I don't have it in front of me, but I will try and remember, the authority to create leases for recreation, agriculture, and public service. So you need to make sure that the lease specifies that these are recreational uses and I would be very cautious about how you define recreational, the town did not define that for you in the town meeting that they passed that warrant article. So I think maybe the lease should say something, only events, recreational events can be held. But you don't have the authority to give them that kind of broad. Okay, I guess, permission that I was here. The town did not give you that authority and I would be especially careful. This is the first time you've been working on a lease under that authority, you don't want it taken away from you. And it could very easily be taken away from you and given back to the voters, so. That's my caution.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
We, we actually voted to, a quarter of the townspeople actually voted to add motorsports to those, the agricultural, it's been added to the warrant article, so motorsports kind of.
Fits right in.
Yeah, let's just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the warrant article release, ordinance and policies.
Okay, that's the thing I sent, right? Is that?
No, you sent purchase policy.
Oh, well, no, that wasn't purchase policy, that was, that was a policy in order to.
Pretty vague, yeah.
For him to be able to pay bills between council meetings. I, I didn't know what to call it, so I just said bill paying policy, this is, this is a draft. If you want to make any changes to it.
No.
Isn't that where this goes? Or is it?
No.
Why not?
Because what this warrant article release is. Is that's why last week I reached out to you guys and we, we had three signatures when we didn't have a meeting.
Yeah.
On the, on the warrant.
Correct, that's what this policy is that I just handed out. Giving him permission to pay the bills of the town without having to have us sign.
Oh, without us?
Correct.
Well, I think. So that would mean nobody would sign the warrant.
Well, no, we'd still have, we'd still have, I mean, that's, we have to work on it, that's, that's what, this is what this is. So that you, you'd still have to sign the warrants, but.
I think that's something that needs to be worked on, the article, the warrant article release, I, I think for the time being, if we don't have a, a meeting or a workshop that like I did last week, three of us sign it to make it legal, where he doesn't want one, until we figure out. If, if it's, you know, I didn't think it was for payroll, I thought it was for the vendors list. And if it's for the vendors list, why couldn't we go to a net thirty day and sign it once a month?
Because they don't all fall at the same thirty days.
Pay your bills the rest of the month, they'll always be paid every thirty days, right?
Well, yeah, but it doesn't, when, when you work in a town or a municipality, it doesn't work.
Because I do a lot of towns with, with a solid company and, you know, you might bill them outs, you know, for example, September four, but they only pay once a month, that's it. And you'll get it the following, and, and, and there's a lot of towns in the state that are like that. That, and, and they'll tell you right up front that we pay every, every thirty days. So is that something to discuss for, for us to do, is, are we better off?
I don't know, I think it's just.
Bring a policy?
I, I, I think it's, I think it's to try to get them on just a once, every thirty days is going to be tough. I think that's going to be very tough and I think it's going to be hard, harder for him to do business that way.
It's not hard for three of us to go inside it either.
Right, it's not hard for three of us to go inside, so I mean, we can send it as that, as three council.
That's true.
Sign it, that, we're all.
But we, then we have to.
We're all here and if all five of us sign it, great. As long as we have a minimum of three.
Then we have to have a policy that says that. Because right now, he can't, without the policy, he can't pay bills without our signatures.
Well, we don't need a policy for that because right now, just like right at a meeting, three of us have to sign it. So what's the difference versus if I run down every day, we don't have a meeting, sign it, well, the whole board runs down to sign it, just to sign the warrant.
Work for now and though we have time to figure out.
Just asking everyone that, every Tuesday that we don't have a meeting to sometimes stop by and regardless if it's late at night and, and it's left out here, we all get a key, we can come in and sign it, so the next morning, the warrant's signed. And it has everyone's signature, or at least three.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
No. I'm good with that if, yeah, that'll work.
If you guys are, then we can talk it over later on about going to that thirty or whatever and.
Right.
That seems like the perfect world.
That's going to be a harder thing to do than just have three people come inside it, for sure.
All right, now if you get three, then it's no different, it's.
No difference.
You're good to go, you don't even need anything else.
Works for me.
Works for me. Cory, cool?
I'm good.
Can you do that?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. We're going to move on to the parking ordinance for the, little parking ordinance.
I went at once, but then you have a chance to get back to one. I don't really.
I have the parking ordinance right here from December twelfth, nineteen ninety-one, signed by Arthur Ellinwood.
It's actually perfect.
Yeah, it, it's pretty straight and simple, I'd like to see a few things just changed in it, but it tells us just what we want.
Go ahead.
I'll read it out loud if you'd like to hear it. Uh, this was enacted, effective December eleventh, nineteen ninety-one. No motor vehicle shall be parked on any street, sidewalk, or public way between the hours of twelve PM and six AM from the fifteenth day of December to the fifteenth day of April of each year. Except that vehicles may be parked on the northwest side of Main Street between Lebanon Street and Wig Street on even number days and on the north side of Main Street on odd number days. Any motor vehicle contrary to these provisions may be subject to removal at the registered owner's expense by any police officer, constable, deputy sheriff, state police officer, or the town manager. This was adopted by the Board of Selectmen December eleventh, nineteen ninety-one. And I think with a few changes in this, this would suffice for what we're looking for on Main Street. In the wintertime, I would like to see, I, I don't think we need to do it at noon time to six AM, but basically at nighttime, uh, six PM to six AM for the plow trucks. That people don't, you know, you park on, it's basically even and odd. And I'd like to see it change from northwest and the different names to, uh, North Main Street, South Main Street, park on the north side, the south side. And I think to be fair, instead of where we have town, you know, apartments up through here and everything else, I, I'd like to see it go from Washington Street to Marine Street. So that covers everything from right here, just past the Smith School. And the only other thing I see that can be taken out of this is we no longer have a constable in town, delete the constable. And we, we amend this and adopt this as our new one of parking ordinance.
So that's simple.
It, it's pretty simple.
I think it's unenforceable, to be honest, who's going to enforce that?
Same person enforce anyone we're going to have.
Yeah, nobody.
The county manager can enforce it, the town manager, the.
But we don't enforce it, they, yeah.
We're just going to have it.
We've got to have it and we've got to give it a try at least, and if something does.
Why, why don't we make it simpler and just say, instead of saying north side, even days, you know, odd days, I mean, who's going to remember? Why don't we just say on that one side of the road during the snow event from, like you said, Washington to Marine Street.
Right.
On the, just say like on the south side, just on that or north side, whichever one you want to pick. But just say on this side, you know, that's not parkable. And that we ask them to utilize the town parking lots instead, you know, that we have.
But what, what also happens is if you don't have it switched, so you've got a snowstorm and the plow truck today, the, they're plowing up, there's no cars on this side, okay? And now they're all over here, now a day or two goes before they move the cars, now that snow and ice has froze on that side of the road, now you've got humps of ice up on the sidewalk. Versus if, if that day right here it's snowing and, and they've gone through the night plowing, the next day they move their vehicles over here, that, that's still loose, slushy snow that the wing is able to scrape and clean. Versus letting it set there, one, once that freezes and we have a buildup.
We're done.
We're done, and, and then the, the state's going to complain because their wings are going to be riding up over, their snowplow is going to be hit, hitting the frozen ice on the side. So that's why I feel it, it needs to be changed daily in the winter, or we're going to have buildup of, of ice. That's not going to be.
I mean, I, I see what goes on downtown and I'm just saying that people.
And the other thing is we need to add signs downtown, we just can't have, have this ordinance and nobody know, we've got to have it.
People don't read signs, I, I don't mean to be a dipper on this, I'm just saying.
But at least with, with signs up, a law enforcement, without signs, a law enforcement isn't going to enforce nothing because they're like, there's no signs.
Yeah.
But when we have signs up that says, you know.
Odd days.
Right, and then the cop sees it, he can at least write them.
Sign somewhere else.
And, and do it, just like in Bangor, if it says no parking and the cop is buying, you're going to get ticketed or you're going to get towed.
Because nobody followed them by.
See?
If we go to using the town parking lot, that failed miserably on the first two tries, so.
Let's give it even and odd a try and.
At least you'll be able to park up front.
At least our streets might stay clean, you know what I mean, that at least the state would be able to, to do their job.
Even odd with signs.
Even odd with signs.
To show people with this even odd, so they can.
Oh, pretty easy.
Well, I know, but people don't, just don't remember.
You don't remember what, what the date is?
They.
Oh, they got a cell phone, they can look.
With a cell phone, you look, look at that, it's going to tell me the date, September sixteen.
Well, you just.
That must be even.
Which way does that work?
And where we just do some sprucing up on it, it's already in effect.
It's already in effect, we just, we just want to modify, you know, just change some times and, and that's why I was thinking, instead of the noon time, you know, eighteen hour, what's wrong with the twelve hour, the six at night to six AM?
I tried sending it to you, Anne, too.
Yeah, right. Oh, you did.
I said I tried, didn't I?
You did, you did a good job, thank you.
I sent it to you too, Tammy, but no, good luck.
Well, I have it on my phone.
Did you have a question? To you, Anne.
I was just, I, I flubbed, no, I was just going to say what you said.
Oh.
You let it ice in, now you're spending more trying to dig it out.
Exactly, yeah.
Once it's frozen in there, it's a mess.
Right, yeah.
So if you swudge every other time, it's.
You're able to get it cleaned up, yeah.
Steve, can I take a picture of that because I'm not getting what Cory sent me?
Oh, that's.
Come on, Cory.
Hey, it's always.
It's going to be.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine, just taking notes, so.
Yeah, I don't have the revisions, I just got the existing.
It's just my revision, what I added.
Right.
Yeah, I know, I, but it wants me to sign in, so I don't know how to sign in.
You need to sign in?
Yeah. I'll show you in a minute. Get back to Steve, me. Thank you.
Yeah.
Who are you assigning to?
I was going to say.
Microsoft Edge, it wants me to.
Just click no.
Just click no?
No, wait, go ahead, or enter something that sounds good.
Oh. Anyway, let's, let's move on, we're all in.
Any other discussion on the parking ordinance?
Oh, that's pretty cut and dry.
Do you like to move forward with that?
Did you, uh, and you said you made your changes to that?
Yes.
What you wanted to do?
Yeah, what, what I added, yeah, that picture you got, you should see all of that.
Okay. Got it.
I can get a copy of that to Casey and.
Right, yeah.
All right, moving on to appointment of RSU twenty-two Board of Directors. I talked with Casey this afternoon, let me know, Scott Cuddy is done from the board. But I told him the best thing I thought should be done, and he agreed, that is let's advertise on Facebook and on the town's website to see who's interested and would like to be appointed to the board for a short time, it's only till June when the election comes, and then bring it to us for our next meeting and let's decide on a candidate. Cooper?
In the charter, it says fulfilling vacancies by RSU twenty-two. Vacancies on regional school unit twenty-two Board of Directors shall be filled in accordance with procedures outlined for town offices in this charter. Which brings it back to the town council, which, if I go back, says if you're within, if you're less than six months to the next vote, then you don't have to.
We don't have to appoint anybody?
But you don't appoint, this is, these are elected officials, there's no point.
Right, well, what he's saying is now, this, to, just to fill the seat.
The charter says right there.
We have to have voted on.
Yeah, he's wrong. It's right in the charter, that one I just read here, so whatever that, whatever this. All that is, I don't know, but the charter overrides whatever that is, I believe.
So what are you saying we should do, it, it shouldn't be just.
We have, we have to have a vote, we have to have another act.
We have to have a special election. And that could be done in November, right, when we have our next election?
I think it's too late.
Is it?
Is it too late?
To get it on November?
I think so.
Oh, to get people to take papers out?
This is, this is the middle of September, so I think it's too late. November sixth is somewhere close to that. I don't have the cutoff yet.
Didn't have to be looked at, but the charter overrides whatever this letter from the, whatever that is.
That is from RSU twenty-two.
Which says you can just appoint, which, that, the charter says you can't.
Right, so if our charter says you can't do it, then we can't, just because they tell us.
That's what I mean, that's what I'm saying.
So what do we have to do?
We'd have to.
Have a special election, people will have to.
Just like.
Get the papers out and then we'll have to have a special election.
Yeah, just push the special election to meet the time.
To meet the time that we've got to.
You know, maybe push it out two weeks or whatever, I don't know, it sounds like what you're saying, you have a time when you'll have a special election and let people know. And then you have times for the school board or something, so you may have to push the end date.
But you have a, you, you definitely have a time where you have to have everything in so they can get the ballots out, so, and I think that time has passed, I'm pretty sure.
Maybe you could check that with Casey.
Yeah, I'll check with Casey tomorrow.
Actually, I think it's, uh, what's her name, Marie, that's the elections person?
Yeah, Marie is.
She's the one that has to get everything ready for it.
I mean, you think they have some kind of thing, if somebody dies, there's a car accident, he can't do his job, you think there'd be something to handle that?
Right. Yeah, I'll touch base with him tomorrow to see about.
Yeah, I don't think.
What we got to do for a special election to advertise that the papers, if you have them to take out to run for the remaining, whatever it is, eight or nine months on the school board.
It's a pain, but that's what the charter says needs to be done.
That's what we got to be done. Any more discussion on RSU twenty-two school board? Next is executive session.
I make a motion that we enter into executive session one MRSA point four oh five point six A dash personnel, excuse me.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
We just, we just voted to go in.
We just voted in.
Okay, all right, all right, Cory, great to see you all, thank you very much, I appreciate you.
I'm sure.
Yeah, no one from the public.
Okay. First, first time here, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, well, welcome.
Thank you for coming.
What's your name?
John. Last name's really long, it's French, Gérard.
Gérard.
So we found out through a visit to a national park that one of my ancestors came here from Calais, France, got drafted, was in the south, got shot at, got captured in the Civil War, and then got released, and then adopted, our family somewhere down south, so-